May I interrupt?
And so could we have a moment of silence for people in war torn areas?
Hey Walter, may I interrupt?
And so could we have a moment of silence for people in war torn areas?
All right, let's do the roll call. Lori gonna be with us tonight?
I'm thinking those tonight.
Lori is the one.
Uh, so President.
I just had a question, what about Lou? He designed.
Mike's on.
So Dave Griffiths, Shannon Snowman, Walter Ross.
Public hearing, none, updates from the CEO.
I have no new application.
I have no new applications. So that's exciting. If we can stay very focused and plow through these items tonight, then we might not have a meeting next month. Just saying. I do have a notice about something that is a little uncomfortable, but I did get in touch with all the companies that already have solar arrays approved. And the one person that looked at it thoroughly did some calculations on the numbers that are in our ordinance now. And said, did someone do these numbers? Well, I didn't. But I think someone must have. And he said, well, you know, for an annual inspection, we're going to be paying somewhere around $50,000 a pop. Oh, that's significant. So we may have to look at that. So with the numbers that are in there, and Shannon and I actually looked at it earlier. The largest ones, the South Main Street one would be a significant annual fee. So I don't know that that's your intent. So we might need to look at that and adjust it. Or maybe put it on the agenda for our next, for a meeting coming up. But the call I got was from Jeff Sparrow from Green Lantern Solar. And he said, I'm pretty sure that no new companies will come forward with that annual fee structure. But I know that the companies that are already approved, my company in particular, we're going to have a problem with that if that's going to happen.
It is pretty significant.
This is significant.
I, yeah, well.
To do an, for the annual inspection.
I think that's all been turned around. The annual inspection was supposed to be for safety reasons and all of that. And I believe it was like a 500 to a thousand dollars.
But that's not how it reads.
That's not what it reads in the ordinance.
But the permitting for solar arrays was based on the square footage of the array and then after a certain amount.
That's, that's not how it reads though.
That's not.
It doesn't need to change because if we looked at the South Main Street and when you run the numbers off from 9,288 panels with a 5.114 megawatt, assuming it's a three by seven panel, you're talking, it was 90,000 per year. Not, not including the $3,000 static fee, like standing fee plus the $500 per megawatt, which was another 25. So that's how much it equated to. So I'd recommend that we just completely like eliminate that. It's 50 cents per square foot beyond 15,000 square feet. In addition to a 3,000 per large scale, in addition to a $3,000 fee plus 500 per megawatt. So if we got rid of that 50 cent per square foot beyond 15,000 square feet, it's reasonable to assume a 5,500 on a large scale rate would be sufficient for any.
Yeah. And everybody remembers my conversations on this. It was due to the fact of the unknowns of taxation, the solar array panel in this town being held accountable for producing energy that somebody else is going to use and distribute and get paid for. And the town gets the tip. In other words, we're the people that are giving the tax incentive to all the other people that are using it.
Well, there is no guarantee that we'll get that money from the town. It's been, it is documented out there to say that there is some kind of kickback that we could potentially get, right? But 5,500 for a large scale array on an annual basis seems, you know, feasible. I guess I would say versus 90, 90.
No, I agree. I agree. It was never an intention to, for the inspections to be overwhelming. But it was for the permitting to be. Those are my thoughts.
So would you let me to do anything with that? That information? Would you like me to bring, bring that to? Bring that to the attention of the council?
Uh, yeah, we need to bring that, I think, to the attention of the council. I don't think that would be.
Right. So are you, are you all okay with that idea of eliminating the 50 cent per square foot over over the 15,000 square feet?
Strictly for the inspection fee, that should still attain for the application fee.
Yep. Inspection annual fee only. Yep. So you're okay with me doing that? So that's been discussed at the planning board level? Yep. I will do that.
Do we need to vote on that?
It wouldn't, wouldn't hurt to do that.
I'll make that motion that we review and change the, and eliminate the 50 cents per square foot after 15,000 square feet was. Fee on.
Yes, give a second.
A second now.
All those in favor? Uh, I skipped over meeting minutes, so we go back and prove those. Are you in motion on 11822?
I was here by Zoom. Get rid of that one for that ten right. I'm pretty sure I'd pass them for that meeting. I don't think I missed it.
Can you say that again?
Yeah, just at the top where it says members present, it says I was there, but via Zoom. I was here, I'm pretty sure. Maybe that wasn't, maybe that was the BMS. I missed one of them, right? That might have been.
That was a joint meeting. No, it wasn't. It was way before that.
Okay. I was here for that one, just not on Zoom.
Five minutes. I bet it's both for the, I don't have one for February, so.
Yeah, they're all, it's all in that packet staple. It's, it's back there.
It's that 18 one again.
What?
I've got two for the.
My good God. See what happens when they're airing.
I've got two for the.
We need the seventh, February 7th.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, while you're gone, I'll make a motion to accept the minutes with the, with the correction of the vice chair was present for the January 18th, 2022 meeting.
Okay.
We go too far, he's taking notes, so it's.
Yeah. You would. They, they always left and went behind.
There's a lot to come up from like the tree farm behind our house. So you'll see there's a couple of apple trees on each side of our property that go to, but then they go across the trailer park. Oh, does she? Now they switch the bark on. Oh, yeah. Yeah. I hear them. I hear them from my house that I'll be having a fire out back. My sister will be like, I'm gone. I'm like, you're not going to come. Really? Yeah. Yeah, I was, I was happy for those. Yeah. Thank you. Thank you. So Lou Galley motioned, he was first, approve the minutes for the correction to the vice chair piece and then Dave seconded.
Right.
Yep. Tiffany, sorry, I didn't let you in sooner. She's.
Make a motion, we accept February 7th. 2022 minutes. As written correction.
Yeah, except for the, change, change the vice chair present via Zoom again.
And you was, yeah, with you.
I was here.
So both of those, you only changed both of those? Okay.
All right, all those in favor with changes?
Second. Dave seconded.
Yeah, second.
Yeah, okay. So all those in favor?
Tiffany Chase, sorry, I didn't let you in sooner.
That's no problem at all.
Thanks.
Old business.
7.41. I do need to bring up one other thing. Sorry, we're going a little bit out of order. Updates from CEO. I did hand out a letter from Sebago. And that is actually Tiffany Chase is here representing the new company. So just to let you know, the New England Solar Garden is in the process of selling their approved by you proposal for a solar array on North Street, I think. Yeah, North Street to a different company. No changes whatsoever. All the conditions remain the same. Everything remains the same. It's just transferring ownership. I did consult with the town manager to see who needed to do that. Because it's, it's no change in anything. It's just a change in owner. All the conditions, everything you approved stays the same. I can do that. So I'm just making you aware at this point that I've done that. So that's going to change names and ownership only.
Uh, wait a minute, how do you know they have financial capacity to complete the project?
So the, they've, they've given me a packet here. That's significant. It's the same type of, same type of company. They've stated that they have, they've stated in particular specifically that they have financial capacity. And given that information, they've also done. They've said that that annual transfer will also take place with the, with the bond information from year to year to year to year on the annual inspection. So that's this, that's this information that I have, which you don't have a packet of, but I have all the information from. And you're welcome to look at it whenever you want now, if you want to or not. But I, I specifically asked the town manager who referred me also to our league council. And I asked her as well, can I do this from, should I do this? She said, yep, expect it to happen on a regular basis. It could happen all the time.
Where does the ownership, like on this go? Like with this transfer and validating that the new information is accurate and still meets the criteria that was approved by the planning board previously? Is that going to fall on you? Is that what you're saying?
It, yep, it falls on me and, and they're basically taking the, the ownership and saying, we have the capacity by this letter. And we're taking the exact same project and going forward with that as if we were that company.
So they have a letter from the bank or somebody?
Yeah. Yep.
When, when is this supposed to happen?
I'm, I, I'm, I wanted to notify you. I don't know when it's going to happen. Um, perhaps Tiffany knows that, but they, they have been notified of the change in the ordinance and that some of those things are retroactive. So all the companies have been notified and I'll be notifying in specific, in specific with certified mailers.
Yes, and Aspen was already co-developing the project with New England Solar Garden. And New England Solar Garden's letter of financial capacity that was in the application, that Aspen was their financial backer. So they've been working with NESG on this project the entire time. And I used to work solely for NESG and now I've moved to, to Aspen to keep this project in play. So it's the same, you know, I'm still working on the project. I was spearheading the project before. It's just new ownership, but same, same exact project, no changes. And our financial capacity is documented in that packet.
You need to go to your microphone.
Is the landowner that you're renting the land from okay with this? And have they put in, put in writing that they are okay with this?
Yes, we did an assignment of ownership and they signed the assignment of ownership there. They've been notified that they're aware and they signed the.
We have a copy of that as well?
I don't know that I have that exactly.
We should have a copy of that. We should have a copy of that.
Tiffany, who is this main mechanic falls north LLC? Are they a single company or?
No, that's the project company name. Each project has its own LLC assigned to it. So that like all the permits and everything goes into the, the project name.
Yeah, can we expect any more applicants to come through on that name? Tiffany?
On, on this project?
Oh, yeah, with that, with that name, but under the mechanic falls LLC.
In, in the future, there's a possibility. I'm not, like, that's not in play at the moment. In the future, the project could be sold over its lifetime. It's, it's over a twenty year project. So there's, that's certainly a possibility that it could be sold again.
Now, Alan, I would think that the, the town would have the ability to, when these projects get sold as they're completed, that they'll be able to coordinate the taxation on those according to the days that they were present within the community, the community.
Always April first. So our tax people assess them in April, not always the first, but they come out to do any assessments. When a project is completed, the same as a house, when a house is, if a house is not completed, they do not assess it full value at that point. That'll wait until the whole next year. That's the process.
What's the reason for the transfer in ownership if Aspen was involved in this project all along? I need to understand the purpose behind this.
Well, Aspen wasn't there from the very beginning. They came in more mid-stage. N E S G started the project and worked, you know, probably mid-stage development, but then they just didn't have the capital resources to finish. Get their project all the way through. There's been significant delays with the utility. It's, you know, we expected to have this project built a while ago, but those time delays are costly.
Thank you.
What's the current weight on to a connection to a CMP?
Depending on the, your Q position right now, there's, once you have your completed utility study, which can sometimes take a couple of years. Right now they're doing I three nine clusters. And those take, can take upwards every year.
What will happen if the state refuses to approve the transfer?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure what you mean by that. Why would the, the state doesn't approve the transfer to all our, all our approvals, our permitting approvals via like our stormwater PBR or our main DEP permits? Those transfers, we submit the transfers and then they go through the approval process, but we haven't had any denials as of yet.
But what would happen if there was for some reason a denial to allow this transfer?
Well, it would be dependent on what was the reason for denial. If we couldn't meet what the reason for denial was. I'm not sure what the, the reason for denial would be because we meet the financial capacity and the requirements of the project.
Have they given any time date on when they're gonna do the phase three power up North Street?
No, we haven't had any, any updates on that. Their, their inspect CMP just added another forty business days to all the projects. Before we reach construction, an additional forty days, they added this past week because they wanted more time to go over the designs with the developers. So that's, we, we don't know yet.
There's a couple of things with regards to this request that I think we may have failed to look at when we were considering creating that ordinance. And the first one is identifying how we're gonna handle these transfers of ownership requests in the future because it sounds like this is relatively common. And then the other thing that I would also be concerned about is making sure that with the transfer of ownership, it doesn't reset the time clock from the date in which the project approval was created. And resetting that time clock from our perspective and how we wrote the ordinance. So we have that five year requirement before like it's built. What I don't want to see happen or wouldn't want to see happen is, you know, we're two years almost right into this project. And now are we resetting the clock and it's now gonna be five years from, from now because of a transfer?
It's from the approval date.
Okay, so regardless of a transfer, because I feel like we need to be very clear on that. Because I could see this just continuing to get pushed out and pushed out and pushed out.
Was one of my concerns that I was going to ask about as well. Is this a way for them to avoid the five year date?
And like a checklist of some sort. I mean, I have no problems. I don't know if anybody else does, but saying, okay, if it's a transfer of ownership, Alan's gonna have a checklist and he's gonna go down through that checklist before, you know, you can bring it to us. We'll say yes, but that's under the assumption that everything still meets. You know, what the original approved plan was like that, those, all of that stuff that we previously approved still meets. And if it doesn't, then you'd be coming back to us to say something doesn't meet here and then we'd have that conversation.
I guess I would, I would need to know specifically about that because when I talked to Kristen about it, she said, this company is taking over for this company. Everything is the same. Nothing can change in the approval process. If, I'm assuming if they don't have financial capacity, they can't move, they would not be going forward with it.
So. But what she's asking is, you know, the original application was some date like April two thousand and one.
Yep.
Well, now you got another one, two thousand and two. Does that extend it?
I don't, I don't believe so because it says from the approve, the planning board's approval in the, in the ordinance. I think it says that from that date. Well, I've, I've got a note here to talk to Kristen about transfers.
We need to keep it the original.
Yes, I agree. I, I, I think it should be the original. And the other thing I would say is just looking at this letter, it's saying a copy of the decommissioning plan. So requesting a transfer application and a solar decommission application for the project. So that also tells me that there's the ability for that decommissioning plan to potentially be different from what the prior approved decommissioning plan was, right? So, I mean, I, I guess at a minimum, we'd want to at least make sure that they're still getting all of the approved, you know, requirements from the state perspective, but then also making sure that the decommissioning plan still falls in line with what the original.
As far as the decommissioning plan, we have to submit our decommissioning plan to the main DEP for their approval. So they might have some additions that they want to add to it. We, we don't know until they're, they're done approving it. And we've had, we've submitted multiple ones already and there's been very minor changes to them. Some, none at all. But we do, we are waiting for our approval from the main department, main DEP. That's a requirement from the state.
Well, that's, I guess my question is, are you changing the decommissioning plan from the original project that was approved? Are you making modifications to that? That's where my concern comes into play. If there's gonna be changes, but if you're literally taking the same exact decommissioning plan and just reapplying with that same exact plan, then I wouldn't have concern. I guess that's the question I have.
I'm, I, I don't think, I, I don't think there's any changes. I'd have to look at it again, but the, the state had added some requirements to make it a little more stringent. So it would, if there were changes, it would just make, make it more stringent.
You're saying the changes would come from DEP, not from you necessarily?
Exactly.
Or the company?
Exactly. That's right.
But there'd be no changes to our decommissioning plan whatsoever.
Right. They would just be from this, from the state.
Well, it'd be more stringent than our plan. But what she's saying, if I understand it, they would do ours and then whatever additional stuff the EP requires.
Right. If they made modifications to the regs between the time in which we approved.
Yes.
I mean, it's fine if they're more strict, but if we end up, like if there's something that we end up being more strict on, right? It's just making sure that we have that surety that, you know, ultimately.
My, my concern is, is there some way of getting a copy of the modifications from an entity like that to see how it would affect our plan because while she's saying they may be more strict, if we say we require X amount of heat of buffer and we want certain things there and then they come along and say, well, we need to modify it this way a little bit here in your buffer, it means that space between our trees. And you as a planning board need to know that because that means the ordinance is modified for what we have to do.
Yeah, Paula, I could probably state that they have to go by and any additions that the state would put on would be more strict than we would be putting on ourselves.
So in order to the, for the EPA plan, they may look at our plan and yes, I would do the same, but maybe require them to modify where we're requiring in our plan certain things to be certain places in order to accommodate with their modification.
I, I don't think they would do that for towns. I don't think they would change where things are located. They would change processes, larger sweeping limitations, but not where and how things are are done. And, and we're talking about decommissioning anyway. So they might make it more stringent and more, more in favor of getting funds that need to be received to finish a product, project or clean it up. But they're not gonna, they're not stepping in as the planning board and changing things.
I'm talking about the decommissioning aspect. I'm talking about with the transfer of the application. And they refuse that. Yes, they may use the new thing. But they may also say, well, we want you to modify this or that. This is what they were willing to approve. And you as a board know if they do that, it's gonna be a consistent set.
My, my own concern would be with PFOAs and have come to some.
But the projects that, what we're talking about right now, it's like a project that's already been approved and the transfer of ownership, right? So, I mean, there's some detail within our, you know, what we put through for our ordinance as far as transfer of ownership, just indicating that all relevant documents and signatures need to be updated within thirty days of transfer as far as it relates to the financial guarantee, which is obviously probably one of the biggest concerns that we have. But I still go back to the fact that, want to make it very clear that it would be contingent if the planning board is in agreement that it is contingent on the original project approval date, right? Like that, just because of the transfer of ownership, that does not change that date. And then, I don't know, for a future state, we really need to consider Alan's gonna be the one to just approve it, you know, come that point that he has a checklist of things to run down. And it's not necessarily something that I've talked about today, but.
So what do you want to do with this?
Alan's gonna.
Yeah, I'm all right with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you need to vote on that?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion. Motion to do what? Who this?
To accept this letter.
To accept it? Sebago Technical about their solar array on North Street, ninety North Street, Mechanic Falls. But this is accept the same thing as approve. I mean, accept is, can be read there. I've got it. I'm reading it. It doesn't mean approve.
I think we should give it, accept it with the condition that the approval lies on the code enforcement officer. If they're able to review the necessary documentation and validate that it falls in line with the prior project.
Yeah. You got that motion, Alan? I, I move that we accept this letter from Sebago Technical, contingent on CEO. Anyway, what would you say that made sense? Contingent on this?
Review.
Contingent upon a CEO review. Yeah. Not just accept. For the, the project name is ninety North Street. Ninety North. I'll second.
Dave first, motion, Lou second. I put transfer in there. So the motion, letter of a transfer.
Well, in the letters.
All those in favor? Now, back to seven point one marijuana. Remove allowed zones or include prohibited zones.
Yeah, so I can talk to you a little bit about this. So basically, I, I, our ordinance specifies that there are zones that are allowed to have marijuana, certain parts of marijuana happening in town, and it prohibits, prohibits certain parts happening in town. And some, some zones are left out completely. So.
Didn't we already have this conversation?
We, we did. We just need to, we need to vote on that. So basically, marijuana use is, or retail establishments, manufacturing, those kind of places are prohibited in the rural, general residential and downtown business zones. That says it in all of the, in all of the parts of the marijuana ordinance. And that's really all you need to have. Because if it's not prohibited, then it's allowed. You don't need to state that they're allowed. So we need to kind, we need to clean that part up. And just say prohibited in rural, general residential and downtown business. And there are several sections in the marijuana ordinance that refers to that.
We talked about that. So I'll make the motion to be able to approve that, just replacing or eliminating the allowed zones in the ordinance and then just simply adding in the prohibited zones being rural, general, red.
Second. Been motioned and seconded. All those in favor? You want to have some discussion on that?
Discussion. Two seconds, Dave seconded?
Oh, I seconded, yeah. Yeah, just downtown business. You wouldn't want a business or retail business like that downtown or is it just that ordinance is stating that?
Our ordinance, all the, the ordinance states those three zones right now. Those are the zones that it says prohibited. The next thing was a, a welcome conversation with Kristen. Yes. You raised your hand? Sorry.
You want to vote on?
Oh, you got a vote on it?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yeah, we did. All those in favor?
Yep. Thanks. The next thing I talked to Kristen about, and it's the expansion of the existing license holders for retail establishments, expanding on their parcels. Kristen really had no problem whatsoever with the, this wording. And basically she said, just add the phrase that I put in the, in the agenda here. Marijuana retail facilities should be permitted in town of Mechanic Falls. However, a licensee which operates more than one marijuana marijuana retail facility on the same parcel shall be treated as a single marijuana retail facility for the purposes of this limit. She said that would allow them to open up. They can create the Taj Mahal of marijuana if they want to on that parcel. And everyone should be happy. You're not getting any more, no more retail establishments, just on their parcels. Just the people that already have the permit. No more issuing of other permits. Someone new coming in, I can't say, yes, we have other permits. They're already spoken for. I cannot say that. So the four permits that are out there, we're just saying the people that have those permits can expand on their parcel. If they want to buy the next door neighbor's fifty acres, they can do that and they can expand on that parcel. That parcel, not this parcel, a separate parcel over here too. Nope, this parcel. He said that makes perfect sense. If you want to allow expansion with the current permit holders.
If I had a parcel that has to be a buddy.
It has to be touched. It has to be one parcel.
Yeah. Unless it falls in a zone.
That's prohibited.
That's prohibited or a zone.
That's prohibited or a zone that where we are taking it on an individual basis as to determine whether or not it's in the best interest of using one's frontage with multiple businesses.
Right? Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Those, those, those will still apply. So the multi-use parcels.
So if, if that individual gets approval for a second retail business on the same piece of land.
They don't need approval for that. If we put that in there.
You have to get the permit for the building.
A building permit. That's due me. You guys aren't concerned with that.
But how does the licensing though? Are they able to sell both products on that same piece of land with singular license?
This would allow that to happen because the state won't allow it in the same building. If say TJ had a part, if his parcel was large enough to accommodate two principal uses, which maybe it isn't, but he could lease more land or buy more land. And then he conformed to all the other ordinances, absolutely doesn't need a new permit to do retail marijuana, but he could have two buildings, one medical and one recreational.
Okay.
Without a limit to that.
On the same piece and one license covers.
Yep.
Okay. Excellent. Understood.
Want to take the next one together or you want to be separate?
Yes, the question.
Is that?
We can also talk about if an individual gives a license, a conditional use permit from these folks and they do not exercise that conditional use for a certain amount of time, that because you know, avoid
We haven't addressed that yet. What I'd like to do is do a blanket though, not for every single individual ordinance. I'd like to have that go to Kristen in that any approved proposal has that same time limit as solar does. Instead of doing it for marijuana and then doing it for this and doing it for that, let's do a blanket statement in the, in the, in our ordinance.
You consider doing one for residential and one for commercial.
Any, any proposal, any proposal that comes to the planning board.
Residential, sorry.
A minor or major proposal coming to the planning board, I want just a blanket statement that says, all right, this is the limit, whatever it is. And they can pay, if they don't start in two years, the same thing, they pay half the, half the permit, the application fee. And maybe our application fee could change as well. That's coming down the road, probably in May or June. The town manager is going to look at application fees and all that stuff, the fee schedule.
How will that cover? I think we have, we only got four of the municipal hours for the town for marijuana.
We can't, we can't cover everything at once. We, it's coming. It's good. It's gonna, it's gonna affect that. Just like solar is retroactive. It's, it can be retroactive for that as well. Yep. So we, we just haven't got to that. There's, there's plenty on here to, that we're getting to, so.
All right. So we need a motion on the existing permit holders to expand. Prose language.
Well, do you want to cover the first one or we already did that?
We already did that.
Okay. I didn't, did you vote on that or no?
Yeah.
Good job. Hold on. Shannon first, a second. And that was for the zoning.
Just the money.
Okay. Yes, I got that. Yep. Perfect.
Hi there, Six Lane Road. So I just had a quick question. So under this proposed change, whereas I'm already permitted on my premises, permitted for medical and or adult use. So with a second building, I, I wouldn't have to apply for a site application review, just a building permit.
Correct. Yep.
Makes your life easier, huh?
Would take care of you.
I'm glad you took, cleared me up on.
Yeah, try to take care of you.
So I make a motion to, um, make that change, that modification to, for the existing, allowing these permanent holders to expand.
As written.
As written.
I'll second that.
The motion is seconded. All those in favor? Let's do the change fee.
Yes. So if you can, uh, I think, I don't know if Dave was here when I made the corrections. There's a sheet in front of you with the.
Yeah.
So just so you know, the, uh, I have confirmed with the state of Maine, uh, office of marijuana policy that there's a fee structure for caregivers. So this fee struck.
When we say caregiver, what is that? Caregivers of.
Marijuana. Yep. Caregiver, marijuana caregivers, anyone can come into town and be a caregiver, marijuana caregiver, just with the application to me.
Growers.
No caregivers. They have to have a certain number of people that they care for, only a certain number. They're not growers. They're not cultivation operations. They're not growing marijuana on large scale. They're specifically, they have, I believe it's six clients. They have six clients. They can grow marijuana, a certain number of plants for those clients and they can sell to just those clients.
Okay. We can get a clarification on that if you wish.
Yeah, good idea.
I'd love to clarify. I just did it this week again, TJ, there Six Lane Road. So under medical laws, um, you have two options of being a caregiver. You have STEM count, as we call it. You're allowed to permit a number of plants and you see that on the top part of your form. The maximum being 30 plants. That's still inactive. But then they changed the law to be canopy is a flat rate now. It's just 1,500, as many plants as you want. So there's two levels. So STEM count is on the top of your sheet there. Canopy is flat rate 1,500.
Where can we see that in like the state regs? Like, do we have state regs or something?
Well, I just talked to, I called as the code enforcement officer from Mechanic Falls, the marijuana policy office and spoke with the representative there to find out if this fee structure was what I had. I had the application in front of me and I asked her, is this the current application? Yes, it is, is the answer I got.
We'll go with this subject change. Be fine. But thank you for your input. I make a motion. We accept the fee structure based on the information presented in front of us.
Second. All those in favor? Recycler license split from junkyard.
That is currently out with Kristen. I checked with her this morning about wording for that. Um, she suggested that she do wording on that, but she doesn't have that done at this time.
Idea. That's confusing. And moving on to new business. That would be 8.1, 8.2.
I can, I'm just going to add it to the table. They don't have. Cause we don't have bylaws of state, what we have to do. So I'm going to put that, I'll, I'll put that on as old business again. Uh, the recycler license and I, I expect I'll get something back from Kristen within a month. Thank.
Sounds like a point. Yeah. We got in clarifying definition of multiple dwelling units.
So we talked about this during our last meeting, right? Um, just being able to change the definition. And I think right at the end of that meeting, Walter, you proposed a change that seemed acceptable to all of us, which is just changing the definition. Um, to indicate any dwelling containing more than two.
Right, right.
Right. Because I think the way we had it worded. Yeah.
And Lou had a question about the dump access. So is that going to affect, um, the transfer station and multiple unit or people with more units? I checked with the transfer station. It did uh, trigger a discussion about how that is currently being operated at the transfer station. Um, that will likely change in the near future because currently, um, individuals that have in, um, in, that live in a unit can get a pass and take their own, as, as a renter can take their own garbage to the transfer station. But there are places in town that a landlord brings to to the transfer station. That has been, that has happened on a regular basis, not on a ongoing monthly, weekly kind of thing. But it happens and they aren't charged an additional fee. They're charged a permit fee. They can get a one-time permit, it says. And they can use that to do like a clean out or something like that. That's technically how it's laid out. But in reality, a landlord can bring to the transfer station and is charged to the, the same fee as anyone else. A $10 charge for bringing stuff to the transfer station. Likely that those landlords are going to be charged per unit. So that if they have, uh, two families that they have rental units for, if those two families took it to the dump, they would be charged the single person, single family rate. And that's probably how the rental units should be charged as well. So that will probably change in the near future, but right now it's not affected by three units, four units, two units, whatever it is. They just come in and get a, a special permit and use that special permit. But they, you know, it's not clean. It's garbage. Yep.
Now, you're not showing that this needs a motion to approve.
Uh, I just didn't know what we get to. So you guys need to talk about stuff and do what you want to do. So it, we need to, if, if you're gonna, if you're okay with that and you're interested in making those changes, do a vote, move it forward and we'll take it to the council.
Well, I've, I voiced my opinion last time this was here, multiple family dwellings within Mechanic Falls. And you mentioned something, but we can't have anything more than a four-unit built. And I question why.
I know, can't tell you that.
So you can't have an apartment building six years unless it's existing. How does, but.
I don't know. You're like a nurse.
Subdivision law, I think is, as Alan brought up last time.
It could be approved under subdivision law. Yep. Sub, subdividing.
By some, you know, by adding a whole bunch. Changes to. But I'm just thinking. The possibility probably have some places downtown. That we could actually attract the water that we have running throughout the sewer system we have running through our community. And it would also generate more business and be a more of a main downtown. If we allow to come in. Happen at six or eight.
You go back to your comprehensive plan.
That's its four.
Yeah. I just find it as a lack of use of resource. And I spoke currently at 4% capacity. Imagine your state of the art facility out there and it's at 4%.
If we go to more than four, whatever that might be. What restrictions can we put on buildings as far as anything besides the fact it might now we have an eighth.
Well, so that is out of the scope actually of this or this item. So we're not talking about that. But we can at some point, but I'm just saying.
Lou raises a good point and I just wonder how far can we go and if we go up, if we double it, what kind of restrictions can we put on that building? I don't know.
Yeah. I do know for a fact that the state says that any units over four, you have to have, have to be sprinkled.
Okay.
So you know, the, I'm sure the state has really good regulations on.
That too.
Yeah.
Well, too.
Move right along. Do you want to make a motion to approve this language?
I make a motion to approve the language.
Second. The motion is seconded. All those in favor? Those opposed?
So Shannon, Walter and Dave.
Right.
voted yes. And that motion does what?
Carries.
Clarify, uh, we got to clarify the definition of duplex. And yes, definition of two-family dwellings.
Shannon can talk about all of these because she talked about them in the, in the subcommittee.
I can remember.
Right.
Can I ask one question before we go forward about this? If we just change the definition of multi-family wealth to include from, from one above one, why do we need to define a duplex?
This is, um, two-family dwellings are, are mentioned a lot in our ordinance. And it nowhere does it say, does it explain? And I can tell you, people that come in to ask me questions about things need very clear guidelines, very clear definitions. So all of the, a lot of these ordinances, these changes are to specify, to clarify when people come in and ask questions. They don't, they, they will tell me that a duplex is, is duplex is a duplex is not a two-family dwelling. So it needs to be spelled out. That's where a lot of these come in.
And I'm going to be on the other side of that, that we just changed that definition to a multi-family dwelling.
Well, the, the difference comes into play when you start talking about ADUs, the differences between ADUs and two-family dwellings or duplexes. Because as we'll go through this, you'll see right now our existing ordinance says that an ADU has to be attached. So there is no, in order for it to be attached, like the recommendation that we're seeing is that you have to have one point of entry from that ADU into your primary residence, like principal residence. For this, this is like two separate, basically two separate units, but it's still attached. You see what I'm saying? We don't have that definition to be able to say what's considered an.
But it's a multi-family.
Considered a duplex or a two-family.
Once you get above one, it's multiple.
It's just trying to be more specific. So if you want, you could cluster lots of things into multi-family. And you could just have a definition of multi-family. And what happens is it just gets blurred. So the, 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 the definition change up top is to clarify for people coming in, make it more clear to them. And the same thing with two-family dwelling. It's a duplex. And what is a duplex? It's, it spells it out there.
The, um, the other thing is too, is with the multi-family. So the reason why is the ordinance calls out specifically, um, variances for a multi-family versus like an ADU and as far as what's required. So if you look at the ordinance, it's saying that basically for a multi-family unit, there are certain lot, not only lot requirements, but it also has to have the minimum road frontage requirements. Um, so that also comes into place. So there's various areas within our ordinance as it exists today that basically calls out, you know, multi-family versus the difference between like an ADU or a two-family, which we don't even have a definition for. So that's kind of the reason, that's where we were going with that.
So do we not allow condominiums?
What?
I'm just saying a duplex versus what Lou started, multi-family thing except for like a condominium. We don't allow?
And anything condominiums even have to go through subdivision law. That would be regulated to main subdivision law.
So they could.
So they could. Oh, they built block by house. I know.
Yeah.
But I'm asked, but they restricted the they restrict restricted units to four each one. And you're absolutely correct, Paula. I don't mean to cut you off. And the rural area is still rural. But downtown is no longer a downtown.
Well, I didn't see that, but because the voice conference is playing on Britain right now. And that's why our ordinance is all over. We can't change ordinance as we put the plan in place.
All right. So we want to approve this language then? Have a motion? I moved and we add to appendix A. Definition of two family dwellings duplex ability constructed on a single lot containing only two dwelling units for occupation by not more than two families that are completely separated from each other by at least one dividing partition.
Second that.
All those in favor? Those. Oh, I hate to be so ignorant. What's an ADU?
accessory dwelling unit.
Beginning allowing detached accessory dwelling units.
Right now, our ordinance says that it has to be attached. Um, and as you'll see, I think if we add it to this, if it's attached, it has to be attached through a door, like I said, that connects the principal um, use to that ADU in order for it to be justified as an ADU. Otherwise, if they have two separate and points of entry um, for a two unit, then it becomes like a two family. But um the question that we talked about during the subcommittee meeting was, well, why does it have to be attached? There's a lot of towns out there that don't require it to be attached. Um, so and you know, do we really want to restrict people from making that a requirement? I don't really know that we had any specific cases besides other other towns don't require it.
Well, we've had a lot of calls. We've had a lot of calls about that specifically in mechanic falls. I have a garage. Can I raise the roof on my garage and put my son in there because he has no place to live right now? I've had more, more, more in 2020 than 2021, but I've had probably six calls about that.
Well, that's about the pandemic, right?
Right, a detached, a detached accessory dwelling is not allowed. But but I've called, I I called around to several towns in this area and they don't have those rules.
Well, and the other thing too is, Mr. Paul, that the state has mandated that you will accept tiny houses as ADUs. There's no way you can attach a tiny house. Wow.
We get a crawl under.
Yeah, there is that.
Yeah.
That the state law says that you will allow them as a tiny house, as an ADU.
But the state also says you'll allow them as an ADU, but it has to meet certain requirements too.
All other requirements.
Right.
Yes.
I'm I'm just concerned, I'm not opposed to this. I'm just concerned that we're going to have you know, tiny homes in the back of all the houses and they're not going to be attached.
They would, they would, they would have to be attached to sewer. Period. They have to. It's a requirement.
Is it?
They have to have adequate disposal of their septic.
What happens if they have a composting toilet?
That's that's adequate disposal of their septic. They don't have to have a septic system. They have to have adequate disposal of their septic waste.
Which you were gonna start working on something surrounding that piece, right? Like outhouses and that sort of thing like we're we're gonna build a ordinance.
So I have, I I had to put together a guideline for porta potties. Because that's the thing. And apparently I have the jurisdiction to do that. So I've done that. They're not to be used, porta potties aren't to be used as long term solutions for septic disposal. It says that in the plumbing rules. But you can have in the in the main plumbing rules, you certainly can have an outhouse. And it's called a pit privy in the plumbing ordinance, in the plumbing rules, but you can have an, you can have a pit privy in Maine, in mechanic falls. It's allowed.
What are the requirements for having a privy?
You need to have it a site evaluator design your privy, period. And if I get a plan from a site evaluator that's a pit privy and it's a signed by a licensed site evaluator, I will approve a pit privy in mechanic falls.
So with that said, that ADU being attached or detached, I mean, it sounds like from the the waste perspective, like you have to validate that anyway as part of that.
Right. So there's conditions where they can put a pit privy, correct? According to water source and all these other things.
It has to be, they'll check the soil, they'll dig a pit. To check the modeling of the soil.
So we can need a soil biologist.
No, you just need a site evaluator.
You know, there's a biologist and there's a geologist and there's a soil evaluator too.
So then this, the other piece of the other piece of this is just um, indicating that an accessory dwelling unit can't be any larger than your primary dwelling, so it has to be less than what your primary.
And and that's to get rid of that can't be any bigger than six hundred square feet. Because our ordinance court, when you said, you know, really good dwellings cannot be any bigger than six hundred.
So they just build a bigger house and make the house they live in secondary unit.
Good. And if they want to add to the tax base. I think that's okay.
They're willing to do it, why not?
Yeah.
Do we have a motion on this or? Oh, I'll so move it as read. Second. It's eight point four. All those, all those favorite? You against or? I'm in. Yes. All right. Sorry. Okay.
Oh, yes.
Four years. I I'm just going to be interested to see how that would shake. Well. Regarding time or timeline required to provide suitable disposal of sewer at campgrounds and campsites.
So this comes into play because of the fact that the ordinance as it stands today doesn't have a suitable timeline for be being able to provide proof that you have suitable disposal. Um, so make sure that we kind of a address that. Um, we put stipulations in that indicate that the landowner is required to provide that proof within seven days. And then the next one down from that is failure to do so will then require citation of the system of the code enforcement officer. So that's the other piece of it.
Do we have any private campsite?
Anyone that puts up something as a private campsite.
How do you define suitable disposal?
That ordinance actually outlined, there's two ways to be able to to look at that. So it is in there.
You can actually take it right here to the treatment facility and they will dispose of it.
That was one way to do it, your treatment facility or have adequate.
But does this encompass rustic campsites?
What does that mean?
We've approved the three rustic campsites in the past, have we not?
What whatever the case is, they always have to dispose of their septic appropriately.
Where is it? Where's a rustic campsite? Silver Spur? Yeah, also this work and right up here on right after Sawyer Bridge.
Yeah.
On the same side. Yeah, with the big blue house with white trim.
Oh, down below.
Down below. He has three sites there.
Cool.
Alan didn't know that till right now.
Nope.
Whether they utilize them or not, I don't know, but they were.
Yeah.
What do they do with it?
On one twenty-one or on later on?
Do they have pit privies?
I have no clue. I don't know. I often thought it was pretty down there. I didn't know there was campsites.
I did too. I didn't know.
Yeah, they don't use them. They don't use them all the time. So it's not like I've only seen people there once in a while.
Does he rent them out? Is that?
I would imagine a rustic campsite would be rented out.
For like family or projects.
Yeah. All right. What do we want to do with this one?
Or with those two, you could probably do eight, five and eight, six combined.
I make a motion to approve eight point five and eight point six as read.
Second. All those in favor? Well. Beginning detached ADUs not triggering subdivision.
This is just saying anything above and beyond. Um, what is it?
Three.
Say three.
When you, when you get to three, so you can't just start packing in tiny houses and ADUs, because if you have more than two, if you have a third one, that triggers subdivision law, they have to go through subdivision approval of the town. So that puts a limit on people just cranking in a whole bunch of.
This is a point of clarification. I mean, it really doesn't change. It just clarified the ordinance as it is right now.
What are his and hers?
Yep.
She said and he said.
I I just, you know, what if a family has a dozen kids? And they all have, well, I come home.
Double beds.
Shouldn't be living in a tiny house.
Double beds.
Maybe all they can.
They should have been in the beginning.
So someone could come in front of you and have them if they wanted to with a subdivision plan and have, actually have a tiny home campground. Or a tiny, tiny home subdivision.
Yep.
And I believe that's out there though, if you think about it. I'm sure it is.
There definitely are. There definitely are.
Actually, I stayed up.
So we want, we want to add this line in any additional new some main subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve eight point seven as it's.
Is that a question also?
Nope. For I've got a motion.
Dave second.
Okay. All those in favor? I can't. All those opposed?
So.
I heard Dave second.
Yeah.
Lou opposed, yeah. Eight point eight regarding ADU requirements to be attached to primary structure. Move the title language.
It's getting rid of the fact that it makes a requirement for them to be attached. That's just eliminating that. We already agreed to it being detached. We're okay with that. So it's just really just monitoring ordinance at the same time. So. I mean.
You'd vote?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve that, to change the ordinance of eight point eight as it's written.
All those in favor? That's okay. It's a vote. Eight point nine regarding EDUs including connecting doors between units.
More clarification.
Yeah. Defining an ADU versus.
Different part of the ordinance.
So move. Eight point eight, eight point nine.
I second.
Those in favor of what kind of door?
An entry, a door. Has to be a door.
Want to make that a fire rated door?
You don't have to have a fire rated door. You don't have to in it.
Kind of think you would just to mitigate any additional structural damage to the other resident.
Any garage attached to a house has to have a fire rated door two hours between the house and and the garage.
But that's a garage. And this, these are two single family homes that have the same, same.
Wouldn't you want to protect the assets of one from the other?
I feel like I agree, honestly.
You know, for an extra hundred and fifty dollars to get the sofa. Is that all it costs? An extra hundred. Are they metal doors? Yeah, the metal doors with uh, sheet rock inside. Gypsum. And they're all metal. They're not, there's no wood at all. Generally, the frames are metal too, but some, some of them get away from that.
So.
Let me ask you this, though. If I was, if there, like I had a, you know, something similar built and there was a fire on the other side. Yeah, we have the fireproof door, right? But what about the walls?
Sheet rock is a fireproof ventilator.
Oh.
And you have
Yep.
half, half inch on one side. Actually, being a multi-family unit is going to five inches on one side and five inches on the other, which is rated for an hour each. So there's your two hour rating.
Then I would, I know I would want that as like a homeowner, just to protect my, you know, assets and door shares.
Insurance companies should catch that.
Yeah, you're right. I'm surprised.
You have a good night.
Me too. Thank you, Paula.
Take care, Paula.
Thank you, guys.
So add the wording fire rated entry door between the two units.
Yeah, I think it would be in the best interest of everybody.
I make a motion to accept eight point nine with the modification that was suggested to add the fire rated entry door between the two units.
Second. All those in favor? Well. Regarding ADU little more space requirement.
We already covered that, so I
Yeah, I'll second.
Eight point ten.
I'll second that. So what's the, what's the motion?
As written.
Ten, as a completion to remove that, uh, before section eighty, number six.
All those in favor? Well. Regarding duration of development project permits.
Here we go.
Oh, yes, that's right.
We talked about this before I got here.
This is what Paula was referring to earlier.
Yeah.
About the amount of time.
I forgot we put that in there. So.
Okay.
Nice.
Maybe it's still.
We've all looked at the past.
Really needs to be done.
So basically pull it, pulling that duration, permit duration time out.
Right.
Out of the solar ordinance and making it a standalone ordinance by itself, add section J in the, in the uh, in article three, section five administration. So it would just be a new letter J.
This is just for solar or?
No, no.
Solar and marijuana?
Regarding duration of development project permits.
Oh.
Any permits that come to you?
Grocery store, marijuana shop, whatever.
Anything that comes.
Like is that, I guess I would ask if this is reasonable because I'm really only familiar at this point with solar, which we know takes a longer time. If it's a commercial project, what is that going to look like? I would assume marijuana is, well, it is, can turn it around quick enough, right?
Um, I think Mr. Monahan said he was gonna, he was going to be starting and finishing.
Yeah, so it turns, that would turn over pretty quick, right? Solar obviously is taking.
Hanford was a major project. That was only like six months.
Okay, so that seems fair and reasonable.
Well, yeah, it was six months of construction, but it was, it was a total of almost a year and a half.
Okay, well, that's still decent though.
A year and a half for what, Lou?
When it got approved here and all the permitting got done.
Still, that's within two years. That's solar.
Yeah, it moved right along. That was actually a pretty quick project once they started.
Then, yeah, I I would make a motion to approve this as eight, eleven. Then yeah, I, I would make a motion to approve this as eight, eleven as it's written for all projects.
But what is, I understand you want to encompass with all, but I would need to know what those are.
How do I list every project that could ever come to here? Any project that comes to here.
Residential, if you're building a house, you have a year, right, it's already.
Building permits a year can be extended for a maximum of two, and then you're gonna get a new building permit.
You got this phrase in here, substantial ground break. Has that ever been defined or is that up?
Well, that's what, that's why we put it in there. We had that conversation about would it really, how do you define what substantial is, right? So they'd have to come to, I think it's at us, right?
Yep.
Yeah, the planning board, and then we would make that.
Present evidence.
Studies. Yeah, and I'm not suggesting we put a definition in there, cause you couldn't define.
Right.
But I'm just curious if we've run across that before, if there's been any dispute over that. Yeah, if you had a major project, they, they could do soil testing and stuff like that, that's not a construction. Well, if you have an entity that's coming forth and doing a major project, they couldn't do all that testing before they even submit the application. And you called that substantial ground break? No, I would.
No.
But no, it's just testing for an application.
But you could even.
Okay, I get that, what I'm trying to say is how do we know substantial groundbreaking is taking place?
We can see, we can watch that, cause if they, if they're coming here and they're doing a project, they're gonna get a building permit from me anyway. And I'm gonna tell them the things that I want to see, I'm, I'm gonna need to checkpoint.
So it's up to you to set a standard.
With a residential home, they get a list of things. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to tell them by looking at their plan, I'm, okay, when, when you do this, I want to see that. I'm gonna talk to the foreman of the project and say, when you do this, I want to see it, when you get to this point, I want to see that. And if I. I have general points like footing, so they, basically I give them a checklist and say, footing I need to inspect it, concrete walls I need to inspect it. Framing I need to inspect it, rough plumbing, rough electrical, I need to inspect it. Insulation, I need to inspect it, basically those bigger things, I need to see all that stuff, there's all kinds of stuff I look for in a house. I don't even know how many points there are. Some people do it differently.
That includes electrical or plumbing.
I don't do that many, for sure. I'm sure it's very, it's varied.
They have to stop work if you don't get out there?
It depends. It depends on what it is, and lots of times, I'm okay with videos. If you, I'm not okay with pictures, and I've gotten pictures and said, no, that's not, and I don't want that. I can't tell where that is, you took a picture in your living room and that's not okay. But a video, when they can say, here's the front door, and I'm walking in, and this is the, this is what you needed to see, oh yeah, that's great, no problem.
Beating the dead horse here, what does somebody trying to follow what you want them to do, and at a certain point, there's a financial problem, but they've got a hole in the ground. You know, they've roughed out what would be a basement. That sounds to me like substantial ground break, I'm, I'm, that kind of phrase, I don't even know what, I'm trying to figure out what it means. You're talking about the house itself.
Dave, are you, are you trying to state maybe that if somebody wants to build their own home?
Yeah.
And they have a two or three year allotment time that they're gonna do that, that they won't be able to do it under this plan?
Well, even what my daughter started her house with cash that she had. What if she hadn't got back? Crazy start of a lot of my life, but what if she had? That's what's your ass?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if they ground, I'm taking groundbreaking literally. It's the first thing you do when you build a place, is you break the ground, and there's the footprint there, and it might only be the basement. But if you get financial trouble and that's all you've got, is that good enough? Groundbreaking would be a very vague term, to me it's very specific.
What I would, I would use reason in looking at that. And if they have their foundation in this summer and next summer, it came around to next summer, and they have their foundation in, then that's it, I'm gonna go. You got a red flag here.
Okay.
What's going on? But a, but a single family home, I don't really care about that. I really, I really don't care about that.
Forward progression.
But a project, well, it's forward project progression.
Yeah.
What are you doing?
And depends on what they're building.
And, and what this does is, is it, with the current situation that we have, it moves that forward.
Okay.
And that's very specific, but I think it's wise to be that specific.
But you, your standards are not strictly for every building, it depends on whether it's a project or an individual. That's what I'm getting, if someone bought a parcel in their building.
And frankly, if they go past two years. But when they're bigger projects, they're bigger projects, and you guys want to know. You wanted, you came to us and you have this thing going on, and we could have another thing going on besides you if we, if you're not gonna do it. That's what you want to move forward.
Now, are we requiring it to be done in two years?
Just to have started. Significantly started.
And, and I, and I guess at this point, I would want to have Kristen weigh in on that part to make that retroactive. So she would, and I have not done that, so we want that to be retroactive.
And while you're at it, in that conversation, can we also see about modifying maybe this verbiage to also make it in line for the conditional use? Like Paula was suggesting, or the licenses, that, licenses, like can we create something similar for that?
It's getting late, you're gonna have to spell that out for me better.
Like, um, someone holding on to a license longer, but like basically sitting on a license, right?
Like a marijuana license.
No, it could be any.
Yeah.
Could be any license.
Yep.
Just hanging on to it.
So.
There is a, there is a motion in the second.
I don't think so, but.
No.
Motion to.
I was just gonna say, I, I would make a motion, we table this to the next meeting, so that we get the rest of the.
You want us to go to Krista, basically.
We get the rest of the information.
Yes, yep.
So include licenses, make it retro.
Um. I wanted to see if there's an appetite for folks to consider changing the day and maybe even the time in which these meetings are held, to preferably a Wednesday. I, I know I'm, that works, but it's, Mondays are very, very long and very exhausting. But then also just have it maybe start earlier, if you guys are able to also do that.
Can't think of anything.
I was thinking maybe the Wednesday following, whenever the council meeting is, so then anything that happens in the council, it's fresh in our mind to bring it to the table to us if it needs to come to us that Wednesday.
So you're gonna change it the first week in the month?
Yeah.
Is that what's being looked at?
So.
So Alan doesn't like being here two nights in the month either, does he?
Well, it would be, I'm okay with it, I'll be tired that first week, but it would be out of the way, and I wouldn't have another meeting for a month.
Wouldn't every night?
But.
I can see the points to that.
I can, I guess instead of just making it always the first Wednesday, the first Wednesday after the council meeting.
Yes, that, that works for me.
Yeah.
Cause then, that, that, that is beneficial, I think, to have that information, what they just did. You guys could follow that, I know what's going on, and I can, anything that comes up, we can.
The council meeting is the first Monday.
Typically, the first Monday. Yeah, and they'll meet, right, they'll meet on Tuesday, and there are less holidays on, we have January, February, always a holiday. Always, a Monday holiday, on the third, third Monday, always.
I don't mind going earlier either.
Yeah, I'd like.
So, so could, why don't we think about that, what we mentioned was, think about that and put that after we have an organizational meeting next summer, July, start the new year with a Wednesday. We elect.
That's how you go elect.
Remember that?
I thought we didn't have a meeting.
That's when we, uh, August, August is our first, so August is when we elect the new chairperson.
And Walter will be the new one.
Oh, I thought that you were okay, I thought you didn't want to do it that first year.
I thought she volunteered, so I just wanted to learn the group at next meeting.
Remember.
Yeah, that's exactly what I remember.
Didn't, didn't I discuss this last August? That the chair would have the seat for a year, and the vice chair would take it the next year, and we'd elect a new vice chair.
I think we need to put four year term limits. Minimum.
We need a fifth member. Uh, actually, we need three more members. We need to alternate ten of another member.
So.
I think I worked on.
Got a lot of knowledge about our ordinances.
So just to reiterate, those two things are just for discussion, I'm adding on the bottom of the agenda, you'll see the things that we've already talked about and need to go to a public hearing. So what Vic and I had talked about is, probably in the end of April or May, we'll have a joint session again, and we'll go over all of these things, so we'll need to, a- all of those additional things, so we'll have a public hearing with the council, with us, we can discuss, can talk about, they can answer questions and all that stuff, and knock all these things out.
Yes. I wanted to bring up, that reminds me, I wanted to bring up that we had discussed in detail animal kennels and warding. And how not to have any within the community animal, everybody, you wouldn't remember.
Is that the livestock stuff?
No, that's not livestock.
Nope.
And we had gotten to the point where we had basically, it was a thousand feet away from any resident. So essentially, it was, you couldn't have any more, we already have three in the community. I'm really not looking forward to have. I don't know about anybody else. Dog kennels for some reason are a hot issue. My first planning board meeting was to approve a dog kennel, people were, yeah, red faced, they're walking out.
So we have to add that.
Never had been so many people at a planning board meeting than that.
Yeah.
Must have been a very heavily populated area, wherever that dog kennel was.
It was, it was actually the whole community, and there had to be over sixty people there at that meeting.
Wow.
And they were all objecting. Yeah. Yes. But we had a vacant seat, but nobody would take.
So are we saying that we have to wait until the next organizational meeting in August? Yeah. I kind of like to do it.
I, I've got something we do every Wednesday, I can change it.
In time, anyone opposed to maybe changing the time to an earlier time? Lou, do you have anything going on?
I always have things going on.
Oh wow, I know, you're a busy man.
I, I've changed things about a problem, that's not an issue. We put it, we set, the meeting used to be at six o'clock, we set it back to six thirty, because Lou and Nance couldn't make it because of his travel. So now we can go to six o'clock.
I couldn't even do five, five thirty.
I think it'd be easier on you, Alan. Oh, okay. We're not forgetting you. Six o'clock? Six, what do you think, five thirty or six o'clock?
Five thirty still counts for people that are working rate to be able to be a part of it when needed, right?
That's true, we gotta think about our audience too. Of course, I think, I know they're having a special meeting. But I think the regular meeting is.
But then we were talking about skipping one anyway, since we're pretty much done, and there's nothing.
Yes, and there's nothing specific.
So we could start it in April?
If we didn't have a, a, a application come in, we would not have to meet, and I would send that email out.
So what, tentatively, unless an application comes in, you can presume April sixth would be our next meeting date, unless an application.
Well, we can. It's March, if we get an application.
Right.
So.
If not, it would be April twelfth or April eleventh. Hey, Alan? Are you talking about Wednesday already?
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine too. Do, do we really need to meet this coming month and just skip this one?
If we, well, I can't, you can't say skip it, because we have a regular scheduled meetings, and we should regularly schedule, we'll notify, tell people that we're changing it, but have a regular scheduled meeting if we get an application. If we don't get an application, we do not have to. They don't have to, no, we, we do not operate under bylaws, so if we want to change it.
Creating work for ourselves right now, so we're saving the town.
I can, I can, I can, we can definitely put it on Facebook, we can put it on the website.
You get an extra two dollars.
Walter.
I want to take my wife out to eat.
Hold on, let's see what I got. Don't you, don't you own a farm, can't you whip something up?
Medicine's on, on the bucket all the time.
Uh, I think someone needs to make a motion.
I move your, your second. All those in favor?
Everyone assigned those two things, correct?